Good evening. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, regular scheduled board meeting. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Dr. Luke with Grace Baptist Church, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Could have everyone to stand.
Let us pray. God, we come this evening just to say thank you. Thank you for a day that we've never seen before and a day that we shall never see again. We thank you for a day of new mercies, a day of new grace, Father God. This is the day that you've made, and we have every reason to rejoice and to be glad in it. God, we pray this evening for our government officials. We pray first and foremost for our President, that he may continue to conduct the affairs of the national government with wisdom, with knowledge, and with understanding. We pray for the members of Senate and Congress, that they may continue to represent the needs of the people, the work in harmony and advancement for all men, all women, and children. Father, we pray for our legislative bodies today, that they would continue to make laws that are just. We ask that you would give them discernment and sound, to make sound decisions that would strengthen and prosper our nation. Give them insight, bravery, clear-sightedness to make right decisions concerning the politics, social welfare, and the economics of our country. We pray for judges that rule our courts and our land, that they may continue to balance justice and with mercy, civil law with divine mandate. And God, grant all of our national, state, local leaders, the gift of wisdom, justice, counsel, and fortitude, that they may conduct the affairs of man in accordance to your will. Grant all men and women, the gift of respect for law authority, that we may be united as a people, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I call our meeting to order, I would just like to ask that we take a moment of silence to honor, or just to keep in prayer, the families of the Four Eagles Landing students that were tragically killed in a car accident last week. They had a prayer visual at the school, and I would just like, out of respect, to just let's take a moment of silence to pray for their families as they try to get through, you know, this horrible tragedy. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for a public hearing, but have been tabled by the District Commissioner, RZ-21-14, the Reservoir Group LLC of Madison, Comp AM 21-07, the Reservoir Group LLC of Madison, and RZ-21-23, the Reservoir Group LLC of Madison. If you're here, if anyone is here for those public hearings, these items have been tabled, again, by the District Commissioner. The following planning and zoning items was posted at the property site for a public hearing, but has been tabled by the applicant, RZ-21-27, Turnstone Group LLC of Atlanta. So if anyone is here for any planning and zoning, public hearing, all of those items have been tabled, and we will not be doing any public hearings tonight on any planning and zoning matters. So people are free to leave. Our next item is proclamation, the National Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation, Nicholas Ivey, if you would come up, and then also the Juneteenth proclamation for the Henry County NAACP Youth Council.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I have a proclamation for you proclaiming National Emergency Medical Services Week, May fifteenth to the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. This year's title is Rising to the Challenge. It reads, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that May fifteenth to the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two shall be known as National Emergency Medical Services Week in Henry County, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And Commissioners, we have Fire Chief Burnett to accept the proclamation. If I could get a picture, please.
We can have the board to come over and take a picture, please.
And also immediately following that, we have members of the Henry County NAACP Youth Council. Commissioners, I also have a proclamation for you in recognition of Juneteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it reads, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States, dating back to June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Abraham Lincoln, when Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas Juneteenth is a time for reflection and acknowledgement of a period in American history that shaped and continues to influence our society, as well as a time for rejoicing in the great strides Africans-Americans have made and continue to make, and whereas is a time for assessment, self-improvement, and for planning for the future, and its growing popularity signifies a level of maturity and progress in America, and whereas Henry County acknowledges this shared history and commits itself to the principles of equality and is actively dedicated to diversity and inclusion initiatives in the community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two is recognized as Juneteenth and encourages citizens to observe the day in a respectful and celebratory manner. And we have the Henry County, Henry County NAACP Youth Council, please.
We want to thank our NAACP, the Henry County NAACP Youth Council coming out and accepting the proclamation for Juneteenth. They will be having a celebration on June eighteenth at Alexander Park in McDonough. So if everyone is available, let's go out and support our youth. They're out here volunteering and working in our community, and we need to support them. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. If I can have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Your consent agenda for Tuesday evening, we have a Fire Department resolution. It is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of seven X-series Zoll cardiac monitors and supporting cardiac resuscitation supplies in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-sixty-one, which includes an equipment trade-in amount of forty-nine thousand dollars from Zoll Medical Corporation utilizing capital improvement funds and/or ARPA funds. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of seventy replacement AirPax X3 Pro self-contained breathing apparatus SCBA Systems in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-fifty dollars for municipal emergency services utilizing capital improvement funds. Under Leisure Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting the allocation for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Building Opportunities in Out-of-School Time Boost Grants Program awarded to the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to operate comprehensive summer programming in our community. Under SPOS, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving award for design services of Jonesboro Road Widening to American Engineers, Inc., in the amount of one million five-seventy-eight-six-ninety. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding bid number twenty-two-dash-five-one for construction of a corporate wedding pavilion at Nash Farm Park per Nash Farm Master Plan to Sawyer Construction Group LLC of Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of one million one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars utilizing SPOS five funds. This project is located in District Two. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution approving the purchase of technology equipment via Georgia State Contract Number nine-nine-nine-nine-nine SPT, as in Tom, two-zero-one-two-zero-five-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-six, utilizing the Capital Improvement Plan Funds in the amount of sixty-nine-thousand-nine-fifty-four. This ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll give a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Sherri, I have a question about the Jonesboro Road Widening and the million five-seventy-eight-six-ninety. Is that coming out of SPOS five, or is that coming out of our T-SPOS? Because that design was done by G-Dot already.
So that is a T-SPOS project, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So Rocky was coming up, so can he just explain what we're doing with the design since the design was already done?
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. Yes, this is, G-Dot never finalized the design. Actually, G-Dot only got to preliminary design. And one of the things, we did look at that design, we actually reached out to the consultant, and they were giving us a higher price and a longer time to finish the plans. So we did reach to the original designer, so this was a better, better deal for the county.
But it's coming out of T-SPOS?
Yes, sir.
T-SPOS, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
T-SPOS, yes.
Making sure. Let the T-SPOS money get to work.
Commissioner Wilson.
First thing on the consent was the Fire Department equipment.
That's correct.
I think county manager said it could be paid for from capital ARPA funds, so we could use, come out of ARPA funds?
Yes, that is correct. ARPA funds, I did confirm that these, both items would actually be eligible under the ARPA allocation that we received, so we can either utilize our existing capital funds and/or ARPA funds for this purchase.
But either way, we have funds to cover it.
We do, yes.
So we could use the ARPA because they're restricted funds, and our capital is not, it's non-restricted, so we could...
That is correct, and the reason it's shown under capital is because it was initially identified under the Capital Improvement Plan, as we went back and start looking at critical items, but it is eligible under ARPA.
Okay.
This is needed.
Yes.
Just purchase it through the ARPA fund instead of capital.
So, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the regular agenda, we will have Financial Services FY twenty-twenty-three proposed budget, and this is a public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. This is the second public hearing, and hopefully tonight will also adopt the budget, so a resolution will be forthcoming after this particular public hearing. So I'll basically walk through what was presented at the May third meeting with some revisions after discussions with some of our departments. So let's talk about the objectives. This is going to be our fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. I'm going to provide a fund overview, primarily discuss the general fund budget recommendation because that's our largest fund, and then also, one of the presentation slides includes what the board had requested and our recommendation from those board requests. Our twenty-three general fund proposed budget is two-hundred-and-sixteen-million-nine-hundred-seven-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-eight dollars. This is up from our fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-million-six-four-four-nine-eighteen. Fund balance this year will be utilized to cover the eight-and-a-half pay raise that we approved in February of twenty-twenty-two, and fund balance will also be used for the proposed additional two percent increase in fiscal year twenty-three. This budget is based on the twelve-point-seven-three-three milage rate. There's no increase to the twelve-point-seven-three-three milage rate. Major items being included in this budget are ten new police officers, ten new firefighters, paramedics, personnel, and personnel for the judicial cluster, funding increases to the library, restoring Saturday library hours, and in addition of a certified outreach librarian. We have other actions that are going to include investments in competitive compensation this fiscal year, because we want to maintain the ongoing objectives of this board to keep employee benefits at no cost to the employee and maintain service levels. What is this increase due to? Twenty-seven-point-three million dollars is due largely to our tax digest growth, which for us is estimated at thirteen-point-three-eight percent, continued strength in year-over-year collections in our sales tax. We're appropriating fund balance to cover the eight-and-a-half percent pay raise, as well as the additional two percent cost of living increase. A total of fifty-three-point-one percent, or one-hundred-and-fifteen-point-two million of this budget is dedicated to public safety, which includes salaries, benefits, and the resources to support ongoing service levels. The budget increase is two percent to the overall salary scale for all eligible employees. Let's talk about our budget development cycle and the timing of key input drivers here. We started in December, where we took the board priorities, the county manager, and the chair's priorities, and developed preliminary forecasts. In January, there was a tax digest valuation, we analyzed the department objectives, and did our best to align funds that we have available to appropriate to the objectives for possible mid-year amendment. February and March, we do make mid-year budget amendments, but we did not make one for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. We also conducted budget workshops with our budget departments, various departments. In April, the tax digest was finalized, and so we finalized our meetings with this board and the county manager for final adoption in May. That's our goal. Major funds, this is a fund overview. The general fund itself accounts for our daily operations. Our special revenue funds, that's where we house our ARPA funds and our CARES funds. Capital projects funds, which we touched on, where we're funding some of our fire, is comprised of our current year anticipated SPOS revenues and expenditures, as well as funding that we transfer over from the general fund. The debt service fund is developed in consideration of obligations that are due per schedule. Revenues are dependent on SPOS collection, forecasts, and the tax digests. So let's talk about our assumptions for the revenue in the general fund. Even though we anticipate a thirteen-point-three-eight percent increase, we're budgeting a four percent local tax increase, which will generate approximately five million dollars. For sales tax increase, we're budgeting that at six percent, which should generate approximately nine million dollars. And then from fund balance, we're taking about six percent out of it, so that we can invest in competitive compensation this upcoming year. Our expenditure assumptions are primarily in public safety, public works, and human resources. Where in human resources, our COLA longevity insurance and pension increase total approximately seven-point-six million dollars. Public works, we're investing in countywide pavement management, intersection improvements, and sidewalk saw cutting, two and a half million. Public safety, we'll have additional officers of one-point-six million and additional fire personnel. At our last hearing, there was much discussion about what was included, so I included an asterisk on this particular slide. This list is not all-inclusive of all the personnel added to our fiscal year twenty-three budget, because some of the positions that were added are de minimis in terms of their impact on the overall budget. But I did want to point out key changes that we did make. For the district attorney, we're adding a court investigator. For the public defender, we're adding a court investigator and an attorney. For the solicitor, we're adding a legal assistant and an attorney.
Attorney office, that is three court.
That's three.
Okay.
Court investigator, three, that's the position title, and then three positions.
Okay.
So when we add these positions, it's going to necessitate us utilizing vacancies from other departments. Other departments that are going to be impacted are going to be myself in finance, it's going to be some in police, and some in DOT, as well as some in fire that are going to be impacted to account for the adjustments we made. I want to remind everyone that we have to fund the Board of Ethics, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We're currently working on a vendor disparity study for purchasing, that's about two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand. We're adding overtime for our sheriff's office of four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand. I've already addressed the library restoring Saturday hours, and then we're transferring out to our neighborhood stabilization program one-point-one million dollars to fulfill our commitment to NSP operating expenses. Included in your packet, because it's difficult to be seen on the screen, is our proposed general fund annual budget summary, so that you can see what the changes that are being made. Again, our total revenue funding source is two-hundred-and-sixteen-million-nine-hundred-seven-thousand-one-fifty-eight, and you see the amount of the department requests, as well as what was recommended. Our departments requested more than thirty-point-six million dollars, but we were only able to fund at the twelve-point-nine-million-dollar rate. So some of the assumption notes are we're projecting property tax revenues to increase by four percent. We're adding to safer grant employee expenses to the general fund due to the grant expiration. These expenses were previously recorded in the grant fund. Fiscal year twenty-two administrative budget for the Board of Ethics, per Georgia Senate Bill twenty-two, we have to fund them, and the initial term began January of twenty-twenty-two. These were the requests by function for fiscal year twenty-three. As you can see, public safety made up thirty-seven percent of the requests, followed closely by general government, public works at nineteen percent. This budget recommendation is the one that's been posted at Superior Court, as well as here at, in our human resources up at the front window for people to view, which covers all of our funds, which includes the grant fund, enterprise fund, as well as debt service fund. We held our first public hearing on May third. Today is our second hearing, and hopefully our final budget adoption, and then in July and August timeframe is when we actually set the milage rate. I want to talk about Commissioner recommendations next. So there was a request to increase each district commissioner's training and travel budget by ten thousand dollars, so that it will be equivalent amongst all commissioners. Financial impact of that proposed change would be an additional forty thousand dollars. The resolution that we were able to come to was that all six commissioners will have an equal training and travel budget of ten thousand dollars, resetting that back to our fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budgeted amounts. This year, we'd also like to set aside funds and fund balance for future land purchases and building asset purchases. There was also a request by the board to reduce the Board of Ethics budget, but that budget is up to requests by loss up to two-hundred thousand dollars. Also wanted, there were also several questions that came from the Commissioners from that first hearing. One question was, how much revenue would be lost if we rolled back the milage rate? If we rolled it back one mil, we would lose nine-point-six million dollars. Point-five-three mil, four-point-eight million in revenue loss. Point-seven-eight-eight, seven-and-a-half million dollars in revenue loss. That assumes only the general fund milage rate reduction. It doesn't address the special service district rates, they would remain unchanged. I want to remind this board, and you're going to hear from the Tax Commissioner in the July, July, August timeframe, about the homestead frozen exemption. Last year, we were impacted approximately ten million dollars that we did not collect because of that frozen exemption. This fiscal year, we stand to lose because of that frozen exemption twenty-one-point-two million dollars that we are unable to budget. That's just from the frozen exemptions. Another question was, what are the components of this thirteen-point-three-eight projected tax digest increase? Eleven-point-six-four percent of that is attributable to the inflationary growth of our existing properties, and one-point-seven-four percent of that is attributable to new growth. I'm prepared to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, David, for the presentation. Do we have anyone signed up for public hearing, or is there anyone here for public hearing for that? Hearing none, is there any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas.
I have a question, a couple of questions, David, and thank you for that presentation is very detailed.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was hard for me to keep up, we had so many details in it, so thank you again.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have about the funding, about the increases to the library to restore Saturday services and Saturday hours, I know it's been stated that the library has got like a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for operations or whatever they choose, I don't know what specifically it's for. Have you taken into account of that and the dollars that you're proposing about that?
I'd like for the library to come up and speak. That is for renovations only. They cannot use it for anything else.
Okay, well, that's why I was asking him had he took that into account, to know what those funds were for and see if that was a part of what we can use it for. And second to that question is also are the library facilities available to, well, not the facilities, access to the library components available online to our citizens? Where they can go online and go to your encyclopedias or your studies? Is everything online available at home to our citizens as well?
Yes, ma'am. The grant you referenced is a capital outlay grant from the legislature that's administered by Georgia Public Library Service. That actually began, we began working on that three years ago when I met with Commissioner Barham. He did a tour of the McDonough Library, and that is a 90-10 grant. So if we could raise the 10% that we needed locally, that made us eligible for $900,000, the 90% from the state. So he was, and the SPOLOST committee were able to get $100,000 allocated in SPOLOST 5 for the renovation of the McDonough Library. And the matching funds that come from the state, that gives us a renovation budget of $1 million that'll begin, the SPOLOST department has already sold bonds for that. They're ready to start getting architectural proposals. So that is all earmarked for that McDonough renovation. That building is 22 years old and has got 22 years of wear and tear. And an average, in an average year, that building sees about 75,000 visitors. So we have some safety and security issues that we need to remediate in the building, and those will be the priorities for the renovation. We also have some underutilized space because usage patterns have changed. The public is needing libraries for different functions than they did 20 years ago. So that's, the priorities are safety and security and reimagining some of the underutilized space in the library to better serve public use and public needs. As far as the online, yes, we have a full suite of online services. We have, like you mentioned, encyclopedias. We have databases. We have full access to Galileo. We have a number of digital services that are available through our website. Some of our COVID response included arranging for people to be able to get a digital library card instantly online during COVID, so they didn't have to come into the library. They were able to just immediately, if they didn't have a library card, they could immediately get access to all of the digital suite of services that we have. We also added a live tutoring service from 3 until 10 every day, 365 days a year. We have a live tutoring service available. There's also a drop-off service where if a student is writing a paper, they can submit that and someone will proofread it, critique it, and get it back to them within 24 hours. So those are just some of our COVID response activities. But yes, we do have a full suite of services available online.
Well, thank you so much, because it's very important for us to know that I'm not the only one wondering what the $900,000 was allocated to. And that's important while we're going through this budget cycle to understand these dollars and the dollars that are coming forth. So the $300,000 that you've allocated going forth, could you explain how you need those to impact your services?
Yes, we had, at one time, we had Saturday hours at all of our locations. We were open six days a week at all five libraries. During the recession in 2010, our funding was reduced, as was everyone else's, and we have struggled since then to get our funding back to pre-recession levels. We, the last increase that we had for libraries was in 2016, so we haven't had an increase in six years. And of course, during that time, since 2010 forward, the cost of everything has gone up, especially now, you know, with, kind of with inflation. But just over the course of the last 10 years, our utilities, our insurance, our, you know, staff wages, everything, the cost of everything has gone up. So that increase of $300,000 will allow us to restore Saturday hours at all five locations and to hire a full-time programming and outreach librarian. That will allow us to get library services into underserved parts of Henry County, rather than just, you know, being confined to a library, providing services there and expecting everybody to come to us. This will get a certified librarian out in the community for community events to partner with other agencies, with, you know, other organizations and nonprofits that serve families in Henry County.
Do you have mobile library services at all, a mobile bus to go to these areas of disparity at all? Is that in your budget?
We have, no, we have a van that we use when we do outreach activities, when we go to community events, you know, fairs and festivals and other literacy-related events in the area. We do have a van that we take, but we don't have a dedicated, what you would think of as an outreach vehicle.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Clemens, you have a question?
Yes, I would like to see you, some of the funds go to job increase with more employees instead of just utilizing the same amount of employees. If it's going to increase job opportunities, that would be great. So I would like to hear more from you on that before we approve this.
Right.
And due to the lack of attendance that's happening in the library during the day, I know that the libraries are becoming an obsolete and thing of the past with technology now. I would like to know how you're going to make sure that attendance increase now that the hours are increasing, because the hours have been low. You know, people have been monitoring how many kids are coming in during the day, and you know that's because they're in school, right? But how are you going to increase participation at the library when everybody's at home on computers?
We still have a lot to offer in person. We do early childhood literacy programs. We do family literacy programs, and all of these are based on the latest, you know, brain development research for children, literacy information. We do have a lot of people who come to the library in person still. In terms of our circulation of materials, we circulate seven print items to every one digital item that is accessed. So there is still a huge demand for in-person library services.
Yeah, and I'm saying the programming is great. You've always done really good with programming. I know that there's a lot of money being spent on print, because we've seen the mailers and everything go out. I'm really talking about attendance. Like, we really need some hard numbers on attendance, or I would suggest that, you know, as a county, we might need to look at what the attendance is. But the attendance is low in libraries across the United States, especially with COVID. People are at home. They have technology. Even if you said that the library is going to increase in computers or something, but we have to do something to attract more people to the library since we're continuing to put money in the library.
Okay, and we do have those numbers. If you'd like to see them, they're presented to the library board of trustees every month, which, you know, each of you has an appointee on the library board, so they have access to all of those numbers. It's also in our annual report that we submit to the state that makes us eligible for state grants and funding. Every bit of that is tracked all of the time. And I can tell you that our attendance, our in-person library visits have skyrocketed just in the last two months. We're just about at pre-pandemic levels on all of our service measurements.
And then a lot of people use the libraries for job searching opportunities?
They do, and we sometimes partner with other agencies to come in and do job searches. We do, you know, computer skills classes. We do resume writing. We have that available through our digital library as well. We have an online, a virtual resume writing software that people can access and live job searching as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions on the library? Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, you have a question?
Yes, I want to, David asks about your special revenue fund. In your budget, did you also put in the dollars? We talked about how someone managed that fund because your department needed assistance and need to grow from all the additional responsibilities that are being asked for you all to deliver to us. Is that a part of this budget?
So at this time, the individual that I'm going to need to help me manage a special revenue fund, primarily which includes the grant and ARPA funds, we've taken that out to help fund the DA's position. I've had difficulty in terms of filling that position at this point in time. I don't foresee filling it within the next several months and probably up until mid-year, which I'll probably come back before this board saying that I need that position again.
Okay, so we're still looking at in the future, you may need that position?
It is a necessity, as I'm unable to do that job myself, yes, ma'am.
I didn't see it in here, and that was my reason for asking that question.
I've taken it out.
Okay, sir. And the next question I want to ask on the public works, you have here $2.5 million for countywide pavement, intersection improvement, sidewalks, sidewalk cuts, sidewalks, saw cut, cutting. And I wanted to see, to me, that figure seems excessively low when I think about the county and the number of sidewalks that we have to put in. You know, I'm still jealous about District 5 and its sidewalks. I will let it be known. He knows that. But anyway, that number seems excessively low to me to have that for a district-wide initiative to address certain things like sidewalks. Is there any other funding available, maybe in our CIP plan or any other thing available that can be added to that number at a later point in time? What's your thought on that process?
So if you remember, Commissioner Thomas, we did come before this board and request to move $20 million from the general fund to help fund our capital improvement plan. Included in that capital improvement plan are sidewalk improvements as well. SPOLOST also has sidewalk improvements for each district, I believe, and we will come back before you, should that be necessary, from conversations with our director, Ron Burkhalter, with regard to what is needed, the funding that's needed. We may be coming back before this board for additional funding. But yes, it is available, so that's the first response to that question. The second response is ARPA funding is also available for sidewalk funding, and we could make use of that, even though I wouldn't recommend it.
Is also sidewalks are included in T-SPOLOST, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
David, you mentioned just the sheriff's department had $421,000 allocated for overtime. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How many positions are they vacant in the sheriff's department?
I don't see anyone from the sheriff here, and I would have to work with...
HR director, Mr. Cooper, can you give us, come up and give us a number?
At this particular time, there's a total of maybe 60 vacancies in the Henry County Sheriff's Office, but I want to verify that before I give you, you know, the actual number.
Okay, thank you.
So with the 25 vacancies, with the salary savings, should take care of the $425,000 overtime, correct?
So the sheriff is also trying to fulfill and fill all of his vacancies as he goes forward. And as he does that, there will be overtime that's going to be required as he tries to do that until those positions get filled.
Okay, thank you.
So for a short period of time, yes, he may be able to do other things with some of those salary savings. But one of those things that he did mention to us, and this is his entire staff mentioning to us, they wanted to increase their medical contract, because we haven't done a very good job on our inmate medical. He also wanted to increase his food contract, which we haven't done a very good job on providing food to the inmates over there. So several of those other costs are going to increase as the inflationary costs of over 40% of costs overall is going to impact the sheriff. So providing this amount for overtime for him as he goes through those challenges would be very helpful.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional questions?
And as of May 3rd, it was 57 vacancies. But I will verify tomorrow, because I think it's right around 60 now.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? Yes.
David, I think you need to change the sheriff's office $421,000 overtime for admin in jail, because if it's not for admin in jail and it's for other things, it needs to be clear and transparent.
Yes, ma'am.
So David, just, just...
Commissioner Clemens, because the sheriff is a constitutional officer, we just set his budget. So he can move those funds around, so we can definitely tell him that that is what the intent is.
So that needs to come completely off, because it's at the sheriff's discretion how he wants to spend that. This is not for admin jail staff due to increase in jail properties. We don't determine that, so it just should come off.
So David, it'll just be $421,000 increase for the sheriff's office?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you can have the sheriff to come and explain how he's going to use it.
So just for clarification, Commissioner, you're wanting to go ahead and allocate the funding, but you want the sheriff to come back and explain?
I don't need a question, because I know he's a constitutional officer, but just for the benefit of, Commissioner was thinking that it was for salaries, because that's what it states.
So that's what the, so that is what the sheriff asked for. He specifically said, "I need the increase for overtime due to his staffing shortage." So that is what the request is for. I just don't want us to eliminate or spell out that it has to be for that, because he can move it around SEC's fit.
Yeah, yeah, we understand. That's the law.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna, is, there's no other questions. We're gonna move forward. It's just for discussion.
This is discussion.
This is not just for discussion. This is for a vote, correct? We have, we need to, it's our job to set this budget. So if you've got questions, then let's answer the questions. Everybody's had the opportunity to meet with staff, to have budget hearings. I mean, this has been going on. So you've had the opportunity. You've been sent emails. You have packets. If you have additional questions, ask the questions. Otherwise, we're going to move forward with a vote, because we need to have this budget set for June.
So...
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So on the recommendations, I see you have them as commissioner recommendations, but what did you actually put in the budget? I heard you say here the recommendations.
Commissioner Thomas, we actually put in $10,000 for each commissioner back in the budget, so that everyone has an equal training and travel budget.
Okay, and the set aside funds for the land and building assets and purchases?
Yes, ma'am. So that, that's, we're going to transfer funds out of the, as needed, out of the fund balance into the capital projects fund for that purpose.
Okay, I thought we were just discussing today.
Increase in travel training that goes back to last year's $10,000.
Yes, sir.
Is there no one here for public hearing? Yes.
David, the changes that you have here are not reflected on this. Is that correct?
They are not entirely reflected on that one, because we made changes to the DA, public defender, and solicitor. So those amounts will change.
Okay.
But not the total overall for the general fund or any of the other funds.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
What is public relations, David? I really thought we were just discussing. What is that figure here that you have on the public relations, 763-339? What does that include?
That's our communications area.
Oh, okay. So we changed, it's communications. Okay. I'm just, one other thing.
David, where is the line item of contracts that are given that don't come before the board? Which line item is that under?
So Commissioner, there's no specific line item that contracts that do not come before the board is included in. There are several professional services contracts, those contracts that are under $50,000 that can be approved by your county manager. And so those do not have to come before the board. It's not separately identified in each of the departments. Each of the departments going through purchasing, they then discuss what they want to do by going through the purchasing process in terms of making certain they achieve the appropriate number of quotes, which is three. If it's above, I believe, $5,000, they get the three quotes from everyone. And then the contract then goes before the county manager for her signature.
And that comes out of that particular department?
That comes out of that particular department, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I understand the process. I just wanted to know where it fell on the budget under here.
It can fall under professional services. It can fall under professional services in any-
So where's professional services on here?
And it can also fall under supplies. We also have in facilities, we have a janitorial services, certain services that may fall under 50,000 that may require landscaping maintenance that may fall under 50,000. So there are several lines that it would cover over several different departments. It wouldn't be just in one, one item.
So where's professional services on here? Can you point it out to me?
So Commissioner, it's not just in your own package because that is based on each individual department. So that would have been in the package that we provided during our one-on-ones with you all in terms of each department. So for example, there is a budget for the Board of Commissioners, there's a budget for animal care and control. Within those individual departments, those line items will call it out. So it can be spread across various. You could have a professional service contract in our animal care and control department, but you could also have office supplies that fall under that 50,000 threshold that we may have a contract with them. So we don't have a package, or at least within the package that you have, you're not going to find a line item that says professional services unless you have every department's budget.
Okay, so if it's Board of Commissioners and it says 200,000 and there's professional services up under that, then that 200 is not salary, it's 200 plus. Is that what you're saying? Because professional service is not there?
So if it's, if you have the Board of Commissioners' budget and it has professional services, then there's going to be a line item with a dollar amount on it. That would be for any professional services. If the board were to hire a consultant to come in and do leadership training, that would be listed under the Board of Commissioners' budget. But what I want to be clear about is that any contract that we enter into that's under 50,000, whether it's professional services, office supplies, they're going to all be spread within those various categories.
Okay, and Sheriff, is there a deadline that we need to approve the budget today?
Yes, ma'am. So we, we need to get it approved today because per our county code, we have to have it approved so that we can send it to the state. And per our code, we have to have it not later than 30 days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. The board has to adopt the budget. And so this is our second hearing, and in order for us to meet that deadline, we need to go ahead and get it approved tonight.
And the fiscal year starts July 1st, right?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. But we would have to advertise by tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. if we were, if the board does not take action tonight so that we could get it on the next available agenda.
Okay.
Commissioner Holmes.
Question for you, David. You mentioned future property acquisitions. What is the total amount that we're setting aside for future property acquisitions?
So I'd like to set aside another 20 million, but I haven't-
20 million?
I haven't brought that, I haven't brought that back before you. And the reason why I'm coming up with that amount is we're working in our, we're working to get a public facility authority so that we can properly fund the judicial center that's going to go across the street. And I want to make certain that we're setting aside enough to pay off the debt for that public facilities authority as we move forward. And that's, that's just one item. Another item, and I mentioned this in our last public hearing, is we have to begin to, because we're cramped now for space, especially at the judicial center before we start building another judicial center, is trying to find a location, suitable location for not only the DA's office, but we have other offices. I believe probate court was looking for space. And so as we start looking for those spaces, it's having enough funding available if we decide to either, making a decision to either decide to lease that space or purchase that space where we have more control of it, I wanted to make certain that we're setting aside funding for it.
Like, like the aquatic center, I thought we were looking to, to, to areas that the county already owns for future construction. Do we have any areas of the county that we're, that we've identified for land purchases?
So we do, Commissioner Holmes, have areas specifically for some of our facilities, but what we're trying to do now is identify future areas. So what we're doing is we are identifying, we typically look for tracts of land that are 20 acres or greater that we can go ahead and at least secure so that if we have a future need for it, then we'll have it available. Now, we're also doing the same thing for our fire services, but those properties can be purchased with our SLOSS funds. So we are actively looking at properties today so that we can secure those properties for future expansions of our governmental services.
So I know just not too long ago, it was taboo to just go out and purchase properties and just own properties without a purpose. Why all of a sudden the change?
Well, we have a facilities plan. If you'll recall, and it's probably four or five years old, we had, we identified several years back that based on the current growth of our, our county population, that we were going to have some immediate needs. So part of that plan identified, you know, some of the facilities that we were going to need, some of the departments that we're going to need for the additional spacing. Right now, we are, in this building, we have no room to do anything else, although we're hiring individuals. And so a lot of it is just staffing, and as we continue to grow, as we continue to add new assets to the county, we need that spacing.
Maybe we can line item those particular facilities and then put a dollar amount by those line items. Because if we're, if we're talking about setting aside 20 million, we need to understand where, where that 20 million is going to go.
Yes, sir, I agree.
And is it just for government facilities, or are we, are we looking at buying private property?
No, sir. This is strictly for government facilities, and I will have to bring all of those purchases back before the board. That is nothing that, that we can sign off on. So once we, as we do for typical land purchases, once we identify a need, we bring it to the board and we identify what that purchase, purchase purpose is for and what the asking price is for the property.
So this won't be for parks or anything like that? Bicycle parks?
Well, let me say this, it is for future governmental services. So that could be, for example, if a district commissioner decides, hey, look, I have a need for some additional parkland, then yes, we could buy it for future park. But I will say this, we need to do a park master plan before we go out and start buying parkland. So that would be, be my recommendation.
Why can't we just use SLOSS like we've done in the past?
Because you can only use SLOSS for projects that you've identified. So if it's not a part of your existing SLOSS project list, we can't just go out and purchase property for parks if it was not a part of the initial list.
And again, Commissioner Holmes, I'm just coming up with a round figure. I want to make certain I have enough for debt service as well as purchasing of, of property. One of the results by our community survey, where the community itself identified where they wanted some of the budget dollars to go, they highly stress public safety. They highly stressed having land available for use that instead of the developers deciding what's going to go on a particular part of land, they wanted the county to make some decisions about what was going on. So this budget is trying to address some of the community needs as well, as they come to us with the problems.
Commissioner Thomas.
One of the things that we don't have before us and that I was looking forward to are the trends, to know what the budgets were in 2020, 2021, 2022, to see where the increases are. So can you give us some information on some of the trends? Because you're asking us to make decisions and I don't have the trends of what has taken place in different areas.
So Commissioner Thomas said the information was emailed to you on yesterday.
On yesterday?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you. I'll be frank, I didn't look at it yesterday. I didn't need to look at it.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve? David, put up what you're asking us to approve.
I have to find my resolution.
So Madam Chair, we'll have to close out the public hearing and then move into the next item. So if there are no further comments, we need to close out the public hearing so that we can document the time that it concluded.
Okay, and again, there's no one here to speak at for on the public hearing. So now we'll move to the adoption of the budget. Resolution approving FY 2022 budget. David?
So pursuant to Title 36, Chapter 81 of our Official Code of Georgia annotated, this Board of Henry County, Georgia, as a governing authority of the county, shall adopt an annual balanced budget. And whereas a balanced budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, beginning on July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, has been submitted to the Board of Commissioners by the county manager, and this Board of Commissioners has had opportunity to review said proposed budget. This entire budget has been available for public inspection and the required public hearings have been properly advertised and held as required by Georgia law. I'm asking that this board, as a governing authority of Henry County, that the budget resolution for Henry County for fiscal year 2022, 2023, 2023, shall be adopted upon approval at this meeting of the board. And I've indicated the, I won't read all of the different funds and all of the different sections. You should have that in your, in your packet. But it covers the general fund, SLOSS 2 Fund, SLOSS 3 Fund, SLOSS 5 Fund, SLOSS 4 Fund, the Law Library Fund, our NSP Program, NSP Program 3 Fund. It covers CDBG, confiscated assets, our special revenue for E911, as well as our Red Speed Fund, several grant funds, Special Court Victim Witness Fund, our Technology Fund, Juvenile Assistance Fund, Economic Development, Hotel Motel Tax Fund, our Impact Fee Fund, Capital Fund, Debt Service, Stormwater, Airport, Cotton Fields. And I've also included on the back, attached to this resolution, are our fiscal policies that go along with everything. So I'm asking the board for, to adopt this budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Can I get a motion to approve the FY 2023 budget?
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is planning and zoning impact fee schedule update. The Board of Commissioners will conduct the second of two public hearings for the purpose of adopting an updated impact fee schedule countywide. Tucson?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. Yes, this is the second public hearing for the impact fee, impact fee, in fact, fees, period. So hopefully, we can get through this tonight. We do have some organizations here to speak on, for the public hearing, and we look to take a vote on the June 7th meeting, the morning meeting in June. So I kind of wanted to set the tone as far as where we've been, where we're trying to go. I guess a couple of years ago, the board requested that we look at adding transportation as one of the categories for the impact fees. We went out and hired Ross and Associates sometime in, I think, July, August of 2020. And we had several updates over the course of several months. I think the first update was around February of 2021. We had hoped to have had this completed by December of 2021, but that didn't happen. But we are here today to provide some more information so we can actually make a decision, hopefully in June. With our research, we found that we hadn't had an increase since 2003, which, which is roughly 18-plus years. We did reach out to different organizations to gain perspective. Like I said, we talked to the Home Builders Association, the Atlanta Apartment Association, and we did have conversations with the Council of Quality Growth. And just as a reminder, impact fees are used to maintain the, the current level of services throughout the county. So what can impact, impact fees be used for? What type projects? This is just a few of the categories here, but as you can see, parks and rec, you can do new capital items such as facilities, Wi-Fi capabilities, and upgrades to recreation facilities. Public safety, same thing, new capital items, you can use it to pay down debt, I think it's what we're using for right now, and to purchase vehicles. Transportation, you can use it for resurfacing. You can use it for new roads and bike paths and trails. So what can impact fees not be used for? Cannot be used to pay for general operation or maintenance of facilities that we are currently, that are currently existing. And so in the past, staff has made a recommendation of roughly 5,000 to 6,000. Tonight, we're going to discuss what the final answer, if you will, to the recommendation from staff. So this slide shows the impact fee rate showing 3544, okay? Again, like I said, in the past, we recommended 5,000, but tonight, we're going to recommend 3544, which is based off inflation. The original number at 18 years is roughly 3,200. So you'll see an increase of 300 to kind of catch up with 22, 2022 numbers. And as you look at the, the slide here, it identifies that single-family dwellings for one single-family house with the project cost of roughly 326,000, that impact fee will impact that cost of that home 1.09%. And as you go down, you'll see how it affects apartment buildings with roughly 200 units, and it shows the percentage of what they're going to pay based on the impact fees. So what, what are our fee considerations? So this is a slight turn from the last presentation that we did. Again, we started this process back in 2020. It's been roughly a year, maybe 15, 16 months since we started the conversation. And so when we talk about grace, and as you see, Council of Quality Growth and Home Builders Association are asking for one-year grace. So in my estimation, they've kind of had a one-year grace already. And since we've acquiesced to the, the 3,500 number, I think that it'd be best that we, that the fee's going to affect immediately. Again, it will be, it'll be applicable immediately, hopefully after the June 7th meeting. And we talk about grandfather status. As that states, the bill and permits approved part of June 7th shall be grandfather under the current impact fee structure. All other applications shall not be grandfather, including but not limited to LDPs, rezoning, and/or any other trade permits. So if you look at what the Council of Quality Growth and the Home Builders Association are asking for, roughly vesting of anything that's in, that's been zoned, rezoned, or has an LDP. So when you look at that, some of these rezonings take anywhere from six to eight months. And so therefore, you might not start collecting anything until about three or four years down the road. So I think that what we've offered is, is considerable. You know, they've asked for the moon, I guess you could say, and we're just asking that we move forward with the implementation of the new impact fee structure. Phasing, as you'll see, after adoption, we're asking that every two years, we increase the fee until we get to the 100%, which is roughly 10,000, $10,000, and we'll see that on the next slide. Lastly, impact fees right now, you have a choice. They can be collected at the end before the CO is issued, or you can pay them upfront. So that, again, offers another additional three to four months, depending on what type of structure you're building, be it residential, or could it be commercial? You can be looking up to six months to a year or longer. And so this slide shows the phasing that I was mentioning. So the current rate is 1661. Starting June of 2022, you're looking at 3544. June of 2024, it raised to 6993. And June of 2026, you're looking at the full 10,442 that was identified by the consultant. And so just in summary, we are recommending the 3544 fees to go into effect immediately. And again, permits issued prior to June 7th are grandfathered, and we will look at increasing every two years until we get to the 100% that we just outlined. And I will answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. This is a, a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor-
anyone wishing to speak in favor of the requests can come forward to address the board. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in favor or come forward? Those that are here in opposition or in favor, okay. Okay, state your name and everything for us, please.
Good evening. Clayton Cart, South Bethany Road, Locust Grove. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Tonight, I come before you to speak in favor of this increase. The action before you tonight is 19 years incoming. Over the last 19 years, we've seen thousands of new homes and commercial businesses constructing Henry County. Meanwhile, developers have not paid a transportation impact fee the entire time. Our traffic congestion is the largest issue in this county. The steps our staff are taking to implement a transportation impact fee will make a sizable difference as we look and continue to address our traffic congestion. I want to appreciate our planning staff and county management for the time they've put into this to get to this point. And I ask for the board's favorable consideration come June 7th of approving staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come speak in favor? Anyone wishing to come to speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and what organization you're with.
Good evening, Chairwoman Harrell and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Joseph Santoro. I'm here on behalf of the Council for Quality Growth. We are a nonprofit trade association representing over 300 companies comprised of architects, engineers, developers here in the metro Atlanta region and in here in Henry County. And, and, you know, I, we understand the need to, to update impact, update the impact fee since it was adopted 18 or so years ago now. And, you know, we understand that you need to cover the growth-related costs that the county has been experiencing. You know, I think going back to what we, what I stated at the, the last public hearing is, is looking at the, the attainability, the affordability, as well as the workforce housing crisis that we're seeing across the nation and here in the metro Atlanta region and Henry County. And, you know, I think we just need to take that in consideration, that any increase of regulations, including impact fees, will make that go further away and also ultimately get passed on to the home buyer. So I just want to red-rate and emphasize that fact that that's important to consider. And with that said, we are in favor of the, if, if the board decides to increase the, the fee, we are in favor of the inflation rate that Tucson did to show on the board and, and not move beyond that 100%. And, and, you know, kind of looking at the implementation, investing, I, I think it's important that, you know, our recommendation is, is the phase-in over the two-to-three-year period of that inflation rate number, not as, as Tucson laid out in his phase-in approach. So I just wanted to clarify that. And as, as shown in the screen, we do recommend a one-year phase-in approach. I think that just gives the opportunity for maybe some of the smaller builders that didn't know that this was in the works over the last year, to be able to account for that increased cost. And I think, you know, on the vesting side, you know, the, any projects that's been filed for the zoning application or land service permit application, that has been accepted by the Department of Planning. I, I think that should be, you know, our recommendation to that, to be vested on the current impact fee. I think it's important to understand that when those permit, permits, the land service permits and the zoning applications were filed, they weren't accounting for this increased fee. And those projects may not be feasible with that increased fee. So I just want the Board of Commissioners to consider that. We are here as a resource between now and the June 7th adoption date, and would love the opportunity to meet with the Board of Commissioners and, and staff as well to discuss this and, and come up with a compromise as well. So with that, again, the council here is a resource for the Board of Commissioners and staff, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come and speak? Please state your name and what organization you're with.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Great to see you all. I apologize for not being here for the first public hearing, but hope we can, we can get our point across in this way. So my name is Garrett Wiley. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Home Builders Association, the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association. We cover nine counties and the 67 municipalities that live within those counties. We're the largest HBA in Georgia and the fifth-largest HBA in the United States with over 1,200 company members. So again, we are, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to give our feedback to you. And after speaking with our builders that are in Henry County, we are proposing these comments. Again, thank you to the staff and to Tucson and to Sherry for the communication that we've had prior to this. I think it's been very constructive and transparent the entire time. But a few things to note when passing on these new fees to home builders and home buyers. Housing availability and affordability are in crisis mode right now. And that includes land cost, materials cost, and labor cost. According to Realtor.com, over the past year, mortgage payments are up 50%. And the timing of this fee during this crisis is just unfortunate. But based on the previous conversations amongst all of you here in this, in this body, we feel that the increase is headed this way. So based on that, we are also proposing the inflationary rate. And anything over a 100% increase would be unprecedented. So the $10,000 number would be the largest number in our greater Atlanta area, I think by about $3,000. So in the interest of time, I will echo what Joseph said regarding the vesting and grandfathering. But I appreciate, again, the time that we've spent together throughout, gosh, the past six or seven months, and look forward to being a resource as well for, for the vote in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition of? Okay, hearing none. Does the board have any questions? Commissioner Clemens?
Tucson, can you hook back up this slide that had your recommendations and the Quality Growth recommendations and the Home Builders' recommendations? Both gentlemen came up and spoke, and your recommendations are very different than what Tucson has put up. Can you talk about what you would like to see different, or is this accurate of what you think is fair? What's on the screen? I'm asking the Home Builders Association and Quality Growth, can they come back up? Chair?
Nancy?
So, so just FY, what, what's on the screen is, they submitted a letter to us, and so I just really copied and pasted out of that letter what's on the screen.
There's three recommendations on the screen.
Wait a minute, hold up. Nancy, can, are they, are we allowed to ask them questions?
Well, it's a public, the public hearing is closed. If you still allow them to come back up to answer questions, I mean, that's fine or what have you, but the public hearing part is closed. If, so if you allow it, then.
Can you repeat the question?
I'm asking a question about this impact fee consideration that's on the screen.
Yes.
Tucson has his recommendations from the county, and then you both have a recommendation on this screen that's very different than what the county has recommended.
Correct.
Okay, so although Tucson has his recommendations, you all are not in agreement with the county's recommendations that's on this screen?
Yes, ma'am.
You're not in?
We are not in agreement with the recommendations.
Okay, that's what I want to be clear. And the ones that you made are the ones which only gives a grace period and grandfather. That's, that looks like the difference.
Yes.
All right, just want to be clear.
So are you in favor of the, or would you, do you support the increase of the 35, 36, whatever it is?
We would support the increase if you are choosing to do an increase.
All right, that's what I want to be clear on.
Based on your recommendations?
Based on the inflationary number of, I think, 32, 22, something like that.
With the recommendation, with, go back to the other screen, Tucson. So we understand the number is an agreed amount of number.
Yes.
But what about the criterias of the grace periods and all of that?
No.
Right.
No.
Okay, okay.
I just want to be clear that you're, that there is support for the inflationary increase.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we have not increased impact fees in 18 years, so we, we're going to have to do it, but
If you were going to do it, then we'll support that.
We want to be fair about it and be able to work with everyone across the board.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, I want to just be clear, that the increase has to come and the amount we all agree on. The concern is that if we impose what the county recommendations in this order, that there's going to be a negative impact on affordability, on availability. But if we use, we agree on the amount, county still benefits, but we should have the grace period side over here that you all agree to, to decrease affordability and availability.
So as, as developers are coming in and running their numbers, they are asking that we give them that grace period because they have already run those numbers as they have applied for their permit. So we're asking them, asking to have the grace period based on them being able to be prepared for when they do eventually purchase land and start to file those permits within one year.
Okay, so Tucson, what I'm asking is that you would get with them and make sure that we're on the same page with that, because that's not the county's recommendation.
Correct.
All right, so I think we need to be on the same page with that. We're going to get our money, we are increasing, that is not the question. We are increasing and the amount is agreed, but there's another issue here, and I don't want us to just skate past that. And you've said that you would work with them on that.
Well, and so, so yes, we will definitely work with them. But what I will say is that the request to do it at LDP or rezoning, I think it's, it's a little much. Because like I said, rezonings are taken six to eight months. Basically, if you're applying for rezoning, they're asking to be grandfathered at that point. So, so that's, that's some of my hesitation with their request.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes has a question.
I have a question for, for both organizations. Do you think the increase will have a, a negative impact on both commercial and residential development in Henry County?
I can't speak for commercial, we represent home builders. But I, I will say, you know, as Tucson mentioned, this is a 1-point-something percent increase. But as we, as you work through the process of acquiring the land and going through the environmental requirements that are required through federal, all of these costs start to add up. And I think we need to be very cautious as we go through this to not jump so entirely to where that percentage of fees and regulation costs go into the value of the home. And that's what we're concerned with. Obviously, we understand the need for services and, and improving roads. But I, I think, you know, this, all of these costs just continue to add up over time.
And, and I, I would just add to that. I know Cherokee County, as well as the City of Atlanta, recently in the past year or so have adopted or increased and updated their impact fees. And I would say they both had a grace period as well as a, the ability to have that vesting option. The city actually, the City of Atlanta actually had to go back and make an amendment to allow that, so just want to make that.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any other questions? Any other commissioners had any questions?
Madam Chair, I have one question, but I just wanted to, just for the board to consider, I know we're not taking action on the item this evening, but two things, we're, we're talking about a less than 2% increase on a home. Most of the homes are coming in, and I'll just give an example of a $260,000 home, you're talking about $2,000. And so when you start looking at those numbers, that's spread out over the, the course of, of the fee. Now, one of the other things that I want to remind this board is that we all just adopted a budget. And part of that budget is for us to provide services to our residents. This is just another funding mechanism for impacts that these additional homes are having on our county budget. Remember, this is not for operational costs, this is not for us to maintain buildings. This is to increase and expand our soccer fields, our public safety, apparatus for our fire department, resources for our police department. These are additional resources, and I think what staff has recommended, in my opinion, definitely meets halfway. If you'll remember, when we presented this at the previous meetings, we were at a $5,000 number. I believe we heard from a representative that, hey, look, let's, let's see if we can look at a smaller number. So what we're recommending in hindsight is not astronomical. It is just an available fee for us to be able to collect so that when we look to expand our parks, when we look to expand the categories, like our libraries, our public safety, we have a resource to do it. The other thing I want to remind this board is that this fee is paid separately. It is not paid at the time that they obtain a building permit. The board did give an option that impact fees could be paid at the time that a certificate of occupancy is issued. So to ask this board to consider grandfathering those pending zoning applications, I don't think that that would be something that we would recommend at a staff level. Because again, it's just a rezoning application, and at that time, you don't know what's going to happen. So I think our position remains the same in terms of making sure that that fee is collected within the timeframe that we've recommended.
And honestly, this board is not really approving any affordable housing. So everything is above affordable that comes before this board.
If I may respond, we landed on the $3,200 number, but what we're seeing in this proposal is an increase to the 100% every two years. So what you're saying is we landed on this number, but the increase is actually ending up at $10,000 by 2026. So that was not what we, what we agreed on.
That is correct, and based on the methodology report, the $10,000 number is what we should be collecting in order to provide the level of service for these homes. We recognize from board comments that that was not something that you all wanted to do. And that is why we were recommending the phasing in approach. Now, the other thing that we need to consider is this amount works today. But as we continue to grow as a county, as we continue to add additional services, this board may have to come back and revisit that impact fee amount. The $10,000 is based on the methodology report that was completed as of today. That is what our consultant is saying, that we should be collecting for property owners that are, or from the building community for the new homes that are being constructed.
So is it possible for us to just consider what we're having to deal with today and not look at the phasing in option?
That is certainly up to the board. If you all want to look at just that amount, we certainly can. I think that question was posed during the last public hearing. If we could go ahead and incorporate something so that we wouldn't have to bring it back every year or two years. And so what we're trying to do is capture every commissioner's comments in our recommendations. But that is certainly, this board can act on setting the fee at, and I'm just going to round it up, 3544, I think it's 3544, and leave it at that amount and then revisit it in two years if, if the board sees feasible.
So I would like to just say that I like to look at what we have to deal with currently. You know, we're trying to, we're taking baby steps, and so we're trying to get there.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens? The other thing is that on the impact fees, we're talking about residential. But we had asked that in the impact fees for the warehouses, that there would be an increase on the warehouses where there will be something for infrastructure, and I do not see that. So the, the monies can be used from impact fees for infrastructure, is that correct?
So, no, so basically, there to go. So these are the projects that you can use, the impact fees, just for these particular categories?
So capital improvement could be a road, it could be resurfacing, new roads, bike paths, trucks. I think that there should be an increase on the warehouses part of it, that will, that money will go directly towards our roads because citizens are complaining about the trucks. And even though they don't get the services, there's still an impact to this community. And I think that the warehousing needs to increase.
Right, so it, it will, it will. Everything that you see here, land uses, all of them will increase.
It's not increased, I would like to see more increase on that as well.
On what, transportation?
On the, on the, yeah, on the warehousing, because it's based on square feet. And then what's an average warehouse square feet? So that's not a lot. It's almost, compared to a residential, it's not a lot.
So right here, you're looking at warehousing, 100,000-square-foot building with a $5.5 million valuation, you look at 1.42 as far as the impact fees are costing that particular warehouse. Now, if you're looking to increase road improvements, now, we're, we're settling on the number 3544. Now, if we, if we move that number up, say 45 or 50%, that 35 number's going to go up.
So you can't move it for one item and not all of them?
Uh, yes, we can do that.
Yes, you can, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, okay.
You can't, and what I'm saying is if you look at a warehouse that's 100,000 square feet, that's 5,000. And then an office that's only 40,000 square feet is 5,000. That's
That's 5 million.
Okay, 5 million for 100,000-square-feet house, but a, a office that's 40,000 is going to pay 5 million. The warehouse impact
That's just a project valuation.
So that 5 million is just the estimated project cost. So when you're calculating impact fees for industrial or commercial, it's based on the square footage of that building and the estimated project cost. The important column is that last column because the percentage of that impact fee is that 1.09 or 1.42%. So it's kind of very, Commissioner Clemens, if the building, and most of the industrial buildings that are coming in are a million square feet, 2 million square feet, so it'll be based on be based on the square footage and the cost of, the project cost.
Right. And so you, like you said, you can move the percentages around, so let's say you took library service and the green space and put them at, I don't know, 5% each. You could put that another 10% onto road improvements.
Right, that's what I'm saying, for warehouses.
Got you.
Commissioner, what they will do for the June 7th meeting is bring to the board an example of impact fees that have been paid for existing industrial, compare it to what we're recommending, so that we can see what the difference in cost would be, what we collected today versus if we were to increase the impact fees, what that cost would be.
And move it to the percentage that it goes to transportation and not a park when the roads are breaking down.
You and I agree.
Could we have that packet ready before the meeting? Sherry?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to have that packet ready so the commissioners can have it beforehand?
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll work on it. The remainder of this week, and try to get something out.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Wilson?
I support the staff's recommendation on this, because they know the needs that we have to have. They, they know that what it costs to, to provide the services, provide the equipment, provide the asphalt to pay the trucks. They know all the cost. So, and this, these costs will continue to go up. We, I, I support the, the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, comments?
We're good?
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Need the approval of the minutes from the April 19th, 2022 regular BLC meeting and the May 3rd, 2022 regular BLC meeting. Can I get a motion for both minutes? Got a motion, can I get a second? Second from Commissioner Thomas. No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Upcoming meeting and events, June 7th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. is our regular, regular BLC meeting in June 21st, 2022, at 6:30 is our second regular scheduled board meeting. Meeting is adjourned.